Can always reprint that every time.
No sign today.
Sign initiative here, no sign.
Good evening. Today is February 28th, 2023. The time is now 5:32 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is now being called to order. I see that we do have a quorum present this evening. We've asked Councilman Carolina to give us the implication and to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. Dear Heavenly Father, we come together again asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Allow us to grow closer as a group and team in nurturing the bonds of our communities. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Put within us a revitalized energy of progress as we move forward in 2023. Continue to remind us that all we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in the service of humanity and progress in Georgetown County. Continued peace and blessings to all in our county, state, and country in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina, and welcome to all of you to Georgetown County Council meeting. We'll move on down to the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Elliott? Oh, Newton, I'm sorry. Councilman Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move down to our special reports and our presentations. Georgetown County and the Francis P. Bunell Foundation partners to spotlight a local nonprofit at each county council meeting. Tonight's spotlight is going to be on Georgetown RISE. Ms. Pamela Martin, our detective director, will present. Good evening, Ms. Martin.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Moran. I very much appreciate the sponsorship and the time of the council this evening. I'd like to present to you the RISE Center, which stands for Resilience, Innovation, and Sustainability through Education. And where are they all? There they are. I want to present to you, I'm sorry, I want to present to you the students in your county that are working. And I want to thank in particular our council member, who actually sponsored some of these interns, and they were hired well for really great paying jobs in our county. They're still living here. So please, go ahead, guys, introduce yourselves and say your name.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having us. My name is Michael Maher. I'm a senior public health major, political science minor from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Right now, I'm working with Richardson in the Department of Planning, and I'm thoroughly enjoying it so far. Thank you.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Zach Baker. I'm from Spartanburg, South Carolina, finance major, concentration, and I've been working at Grand Strand Water and Sewer Authority in the accounting department.
How are you?
Hi, everyone. My name's Katie Zimmerman. I am originally from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania as well. I'm a senior sustainability and coastal resilience major at Coastal, and my internship is at Georgetown Water and Sewer at the Litchfield Plant.
Good afternoon. I'm Aaron Osborne. I was born in Tom's River, New Jersey. I'm currently interning with Michelle and Marine over here at Environmental Services of Georgetown County, and I'm majoring in sustainability and coastal resilience. So, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brianne McBeingham, and I am from Kentucky. I'm a senior at Coastal studying political science and women's and gender studies, and I have the pleasure of working beside Aaron with Marine and Michelle at the Office of Environmental Services.
And that's just a snapshot of the students that we bring to you from throughout the United States at Coastal Carolina University as an economic development grant generously sponsored by our county's public and private members as well as the Francis P. Bunell Foundation. I'd like to thank Jamie Giroux here, who's sitting here, who helps us with this program. I'd also like to say that we are sponsored and partnered with the National Esturopene Research Reserve on our scientific data as well as sustain as the next likely. Our center stands on three pillars, and that's community-engaged research. An example of that would be a $250,000 grant that we share with the South Carolina Department Office of Insurance and the South Carolina Office of Resilience. And we are looking with the Joyner Institute for Gullah-Gi Chi and African Diaspora Studies. We're looking at small communities in Georgetown County. We try and focus on our county as much as we can and get the state to join us in that initiative to build resilience on flooding in our county. Of course, the highlight of our center is the paid youth core internship program. We're 60% to 70% of our students are being employed now in Georgetown County and staying there, living, working, playing with all of you because of that program. And then lastly, we conduct sustainability studies for the state. An example of those would be some of the sustainability frameworks. We just did one with the community of Merle's Inlet. This is an innovative program, and I should say both of these programs, both the youth core program and the sustainability assessments, have won the most outstanding flagship program in the United Nations for Education for Sustainable Development. So Georgetown County has been on the map. I mean, I think we've been on that before globally, but we're back on the map globally with these programs, thanks to your sponsorship. We've also collaborated with the community in the Baskerville Food Pantry. We've done a food insecurity study, and that resulted in Feed Georgetown Food Network. We want to thank them for that sponsorship. We've produced a data dashboard for the county to measure sustainability on a number of metrics, including poverty, sea level rise, flooding, et cetera. As I said, we partner with scientists. And lastly, I'd like to say, you may say, why is this all important other than workforce pipeline? It's important because with PNSC, we found that 76% of our companies in South Carolina measure sustainability. They also measure sea level rise and flooding. They measure carbon emissions. They measure their protection of water and the forest. And with that, I'll close with a short video of our pride and joy, the young people that we bring to this county. And again, thank you for your time. United Nations status for...
Thank you. Thank you, Director Martin. We move on down to the presentation from the Emergency Management Department. Mr. Ellis.
Good evening Chairman Morant, members of council. Madam Administrator asked me to join you all this evening and provide you with a couple of updates relevant to the Emergency Services Department. First off, we'll provide an update of the Andrews EMS situation. As you all are aware, we've in December of 2022, we made an operational adjustment and relocated EMS Medic 15, which was previously stayed within the town limits of Andrews, just outside of Andrews due to some structural issues with the building, well, some other concerns. Several of our employees had their vehicles broken into and things of that nature. And the damages to the building from a roof leak were going to exceed budget capacities somewhere in the ballpark of around $300,000 to do repairs. The decision was made after careful consideration to relocate that ambulance to a nearby county facility, county EMS, fire EMS facility located at the corner of Big Dam Swamp Road and County Line Road. That was much closer than the Nine Mile Curve Station, which was the other option on the table. This move was completed following careful consideration and consideration of the safety of the residents as well as the crews that we have working that area. Where you guys have been presented with some concerns, I think we addressed those concerns through our feedback to you, but I will be subject to any questions that you might have regarding that at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Are there any questions from council to Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, I have a couple, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ellis, what is the normal response time inside the city limits of Andrews when EMS was stationed in town? Do you have a?
I don't have a, I don't have an exact number of what the actual response time was. That ambulance doesn't just cover the town of Andrews.
Covers.
Covers a large swath of the, that portion of the county. The majority of its coverage area is actually outside of the town of Andrews. I do know since we did relocate, there's been a variance either plus or minus two minutes either side of the ball, just depending on where we're responding to based off of the data points that we have pulled.
How many calls do they make on an average day?
It varies. There's days when they could run, you know, one or two, three calls a day from that ambulance station, or they could run, you know, near seven, eight, nine, 10. It just depends on the day.
So when, when they're, when they're on a call and another call comes in, how, how was that, that service covered?
So the, the computer aided dispatch system and dispatch will pull the next available ambulance. We also pull the next closest emergency response capability. So that might be a fire engine from an adjacent station. It may be another service unit or squad unit, as we call it, from an adjacent station. Wherever the call is at, it pulls the next available resource in proximity based off of the capability that's requesting.
So that could be from the Nine Mile Curve Station or the, even the Pleasant Hills Station, I take it?
Yes, sir. It could come from any of those stations as well as, you know, if our folks are listening to the radio and they hear calls and they know that another unit may be in transit from another call from a closer location, they'll, they'll shift the call themselves versus relying on the computer to do it for them.
Have, have you seen where this move has jeopardized any of our calls within the location surrounding Andrews?
No, sir. We have not received any information from, from anyone really, any citizen complaints, any fellow first responder complaints directly to my office nor to the fire EMS office regarding any issues for calls for service and whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions for Ms. Ellis? Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
All right, thank you. I do have one more order of business on a much happier note, I guess you could say. I would like to announce and recognize that the Georgetown County Emergency Management Department was recently awarded Agency of the Year by the South Carolina Emergency Management Association. Last week during the association's conference, our agency was awarded Agency of the Year, which is quite a feat. As you know, we are basically a one and a half person shop, so I run dual roles. So day to day operations played into this, but the, the meat and potatoes of the award came from the response and recovery initiatives that not only my office, but Team Georgetown put forth prior to, during and following Hurricane Ian. So this award here is not just for the Georgetown County Emergency Management Office, but it is also for every single agency and stakeholder that helps participate and keep Georgetown County safe during those trying times. So just want to put that out there, recognize those folks who, who help us when it's outside of their day to day duties and just give them a round of applause.
Ms. Ellis, let's take a picture of our.
We love, we love photos, so yes, we can take a photo.
Congratulations, Brian. Good job.
Yes, congratulations again to the Emergency Management Department and, and Team Georgetown. Let's move on down to our litter action plan from Mr. Funny.
Mr. Chairman, members of council. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
A year ago, we were tasked with together planning a litter action plan. And tonight we're here with our team to report to you all the success and the, some of the challenges that we have experienced over the past 12 months. I'd like to also recognize, and helped us last year to have some statistical analysis on the heat maps and some other little assessment tools that we use to measure in the field. At this time, I'd like to present our environmentalist, Marie Mulligan, who will make the presentation. We also have with us a senior manager for environmental services, Michelle Barocco, that's here today as well. This time, Ms. Mulligan.
Thank you all for being here. It's been a while since we talked about litter. I'm going to keep it fairly short. We're just going to go over, I don't know if you remember the plan that was adopted by, thanks to the county council, we adopted a five point action plan for litter. So I'm just going to go through kind of what we've accomplished and what we still need to do. And we all know what the problem is. There's lots of roadside litter. There is a lot of roadway to cover in this county and it's a very big county, so it's a big problem. And we all have, probably have the same vision that we would like to have the county clean and well kept and have everybody be a part of doing that. We have, we do have some barriers to accomplishing our goals that we're hoping to accomplish. One of them is funding, which we have gotten a couple of grants so that we're able to do this project, which is a part time litter crew that we've hired that works throughout the county. They've done over 800 miles of roadway in the county collecting heavy debris. We also have a barrier of communication and coordination with other agencies and departments and the cities in, within the county that we're hoping we can have an effect on. And then the key is safety because it can be dangerous out there. This is just a lot of information that you all might want to look at at another time. It's the table of the five action items that we presented, the actions we've taken so far, the needs that we have met, that we still have to achieve, and then the outcomes that we have had so far. Just to highlight a couple, the, we've had over 325 volunteers and then we've also had 14 community service volunteers as well. And we have, as a result of that, it's just under $150,000 worth of safe salary in those cleanup events. So it's, it's a pretty, pretty big program so far. Our first action item is the litter index. And we've collected this in 21, 22, and our new interns are actually in the process of collecting this again. It seems to kind of, it's, stays pretty steady. This is two years worth of data put together into a heat map. And if, if you don't know the county, it's that white hotspot that's kind of around the Andrews area. We've been trying to sort of target those roadways. The second action item is inter-agency coordination. In the grants that we received this year, we actually have some funds so that we can have that luncheon where we can get all these groups together, the Adopt a Highway Volunteers, Palmetto Pride, all these groups, and try to create a, my hope is that we can get some sort of database, but at the very least, a list of everybody, contact information, and how we can make an idea of how we can coordinate our efforts so we're not duplicating. Action item three, we wanted to make some visible reminders. We have some people here tonight who've won awards for sign design. We did a contest over the summer and we have our two winners here, which we're going to present with their own signs. And then we also have community cleanup signs that we leave with our trash. So usually the cleanups are part of Saturday. We have these signs that say, "Community cleanup Georgetown County, please don't litter." And we leave those so that it's a reminder and as people drive by, they know that that was actually done by the community. Action item four is volunteer recruitment. As I said, we had over 325 volunteers last year. And then we also have community service workers that work with us. And one of our volunteer groups that does one of the big chores in the county, he works on Highway 17 and he's joined us tonight, he and his group. So, next slide please. Action item five is the school outreach. And we've been doing a lot of events. We did over, just under, we did 19 events and we met with over 1,100 people. These were community events as well as school events. And really, we just started, this past November, we've sent out notices inviting people to come to the landfill for tours about litter and recycling. So those are our five action items. We still do have some challenges, but we have had some great volunteer events and we've collected 30, 31 tons of trash in the year 2022. And just this month, we've collected three tons of trash. So it's, it's still a problem and we're hoping to focus more on education and going into the elementary schools, trying to get the kids up more on board and, you know, maybe they'll, their parents call us and arrange cleanups. One other piece of good news, the CDOT just got awarded a big chunk of funds. So for the remainder of this fiscal year, we have some money that we're trying to help them decide which roadways to clean. And then next year, we'll have a chunk of money that we can, they're going to use private contractors to do cleanups on roadways. So we, we're going to try to coordinate with them so that we're not overlapping and we can also provide them with good information on which roadways they need to target. So if I could, I would like to just introduce our winners of our sign design contest. This is Andrea Abogio. She's a freshman at Georgetown High and she likes to read. She's on the cross country team and she does karate. And this is her, her glad, he's a little shy, but he did a great job on that turtle sign I think you saw on the, on the slide. And he likes to draw and he likes to travel. So I just want to thank them and if we could just give them a hand, this is. A sign, one of the signs that they helped create.
Hot spot. God, I've already seen that. I got two, two clean up days.
Hey, nice.
Are there any questions from council to Mr. Funny or Ms. Mulligan?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to comment, Ms. Mulligan, Ms. Roper, which I know both very well and I know how hard they work and the, the big task that's in front of them with the litter on our roads in, in Georgetown County. The first cleanup that I was involved with, I didn't know what to expect. I didn't know how much we would get. We had quite of a, a big crew that day and we picked up over 3,000 pounds of litter between eight o'clock and, started at eight o'clock in the morning and we stopped at noon and it was over a ton of litter, which I was just blown away at. You think you can see the trash from the vehicle driving down the road, but when you get out there and what a, I call it a pine comb grabber in a bag, you really see what's down in the weeds. And on another occasion, you never know what you're going to find when you out there doing the litter pickup. We were doing one over in Andrews and we were literally down in the muck and the mud and the ditch. It was a deep ditch and we come across a little puppy stuck in the mud. And I know Michelle probably remembers this well. I had to dig it out of the mud and hand it up to, to ones up on top and it had been in the mud so long it couldn't stand or walk. And it was a little girl's puppy a block away that had wandered away from home and it fell in the ditch. And we, we found, we found the little girl later that day. We, we took it home and cleaned it up and fed it and had my wife to bathe it and wrap it up in a towel and it went to sleep, of course. And we delivered, we delivered a clean puppy to them that evening. And so you get involved with it, you never know what you're going to find on the side of the road. Thank, thank you all for all the work that you do. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also would like to commend the Public Service and Environmental Service for your efforts. You came with assistance when we first announced in the grave station community, we had three projects that we wanted to attack, litter control, light removal and flood and drainage. And since then, we've had, in the last four months, we've had four community cleanups where it's now showing where the community is truly taking pride in their community. And we want to continue the process with further communities in District Three, North Sandy, Sampit, Lambert Town and parts of Andrews. So again, we appreciate your service and we look forward to working with you continuously as we move on into the warmer months. Thank you again.
Okay. Any other comments from council regarding? Yes, I'd, you know, just like to thank you all for all the effort you make within Georgetown County to make sure Georgetown County remains a clean and effective place for its residents. So thank you all for all the work that you do and for all your partnership with all the different organizations from the communities. Thank you. We move down to our public comment. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his, her, a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note your timing on the screen, which will be in front of you. And at the expiration of your time, we ask that you, prior to the expiration of your time, we ask that you conclude your comments. Also, please note that council will not be responding to your comments, but it, but we will be taking it under consideration. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do have five speakers signed up tonight. Each will have up to three minutes to speak and the first is Ms. Jennifer Hunt.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Hunt and I am welcoming y'all to be a member of the Andrews Beautification Group. We are a South Carolina state registered 501(c)(3) group that has formed. We have eight members that we are working on several projects with bettering our sweet little Andrews. And I would invite y'all to come to our meetings and all donations to our Andrews Beautification Group is tax deductible. We take, we take Cash App and Venmo and we have a checking account now. And we are working on, we have several things that we're working on right now, one of which is the 41 blighted houses that we've presented to town council in Andrews to get some grant money to get these houses pushed down so that it can beautify our little town. We're also working on a website for the town. We currently have a, a Facebook page called Andrews, South Carolina News Facebook page that is working in the interim. We have right at 7,000 members and we have all kinds of events that we post daily, sometimes hourly. We are also working on, our meetings are the second Thursday of every month at six o'clock at 3:10 PM. And the next meeting, we will have a drawing for a $20 gift certificate to Mel's Market. So if you want to come, you might be able to win a little gift certificate. But I welcome you all to become a member of the Andrews Beautification Group. I think it's a great little group to better Andrews. Thank you.
Mr. Dwayne Draper.
Good afternoon, Dwayne Draper. I'm here tonight, not in my capacity with Keep It Green, but as a South Carolina Master Naturalists and Chair of Inlet and Bay Stewards, a friends group to the North Inlet Winia Bay National Estering Research Reserve. I'm in favor of the draft of the national resource element as presented to and unanimously approved by the Planning Commission on November 17th. I am opposed to the heavily revised goals and objectives of the NRE that was slipped in front of county council and the public for second reading two weeks ago. I want to commend the planning staff for their exhaustive work on the many drafts of this element and their outreach to local citizens and community groups who offered suggestions and input into the final document. That's better. It was a very collaborative approach, which reflected the hopes and concerns of many of your constituents in Georgetown County. The fact that the goals and objectives were eviscerated by administration without benefit of further review and comments by either the public or the Planning Commission is deeply disturbing. This element, as well as the entire comprehensive plan, is intended to be aspirational and spell out the vision for planning over the next 10 years. It is not only expected to protect and preserve our quality of life today, but also that of our children and grandchildren in the years to come. In the revised document, here are words that were deleted. Reward, incentivize, improve, attain, reduce, implement, enact, protect, assure, curtail, create, establish. Here are the words that replace those action verbs. Encourage, pursue, draft, assist, discourage, consider, review, consider, review, consider, review. You get the point. In goal number one, more examples, restrict single use plastic bags under four mil thickness. Eliminated. In goal number four, strive to reopen closed shellfish harvesting grounds and maintain the health of open shellfish harvesting grounds. Eliminated. In goal five, research and pursue grants through the South Carolina Forest Re-Commission for an urban, urban forest reprogram in the Waukma Neck region. Eliminated. In goal six, preserve the environment and water quality of the Merle's Inlet watershed by reducing pollution, runoff and the degradation of the inlet. Eliminated. In goal seven, explore the utilization of the 2020, 2020 green space sales tax. Eliminated. Budgetary concerns were cited as the Budgetary concerns were cited as the reasons for these significant changes. The agenda request form from planning clearly states that the financial impact for ordinance 22-44 is not applicable. Please restore the vision and aspirations to the NRE by denying these recent changes and remanding it back to the Planning Commission for further study and public input. Thank you.
Good evening, County Council. My name is Amy Jones. I've lived in North Litchfield for the past decade. I've been attending County Council and Planning Commission meetings for some time now for the purpose of educating myself as to how my community functions and to make a positive difference. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. I'm here tonight just as one citizen, but trust me when I tell you that I echo the sentiments of many who find ourselves confused and more than a little frustrated, especially after the last council meetings. I want to talk to you a little bit about transparency, a concept I believe to be the cornerstone of all governance by its selected officials. The seemingly persistent lack of transparency has never been more evident than with the actions taken regarding our national, or excuse me, our natural resource element in our last meeting. The sad irony is that transparency had been the order of the day, along with stakeholder input, civil discourse, compromise, and a resulting plan that most were very happy with. Yet with only last-minute notification and no opportunity to respond to revisions, this plan was changed dramatically with most transparency coming from our faithful editor from the Coastal Observer, Charles Swinson. Thank you, Charles, for an after-the-fact sharing of that plan and the changes that were made. Even more disturbing was the fact that there was a unanimous approval of this drastically changed plan that didn't remotely resemble the original, that was worked on so diligently and equitably by our planning staff and stakeholders. Each of you raised your hand without a word of explanation, clarification, advocacy for your positions, not a word to the very people you represent as to the reasoning for your vote. That behavior, my friends, is simply unacceptable. We want to hear from you always, not just about the good that we just saw tonight, which was wonderful. That exchange between community and council is what we expect during good times and hard times. Let's talk a little bit about procedures. It appears that even this body has some confusion as to what is appropriate to be voted on by council versus Planning Commission. Confusion can happen at times and paired with transparency is understandable, and we can all figure that out together. What isn't understandable is when the accepted body proposes one thing and council chooses another entity, as happened with Pedigree Place. I can't imagine the frustration of stakeholders as well as your very own planning commissioners whom you appointed. The lack of cohesiveness among this council and with other boards is apparently evident, and it does little to instill confidence amongst your constituency. I think that's a negative feedback for tonight. I'd like to close by saying that I appreciate how difficult it is to be transparent at times, but we have to demand that of you and we have to demand the respect for one another. In closing, my daughter graduated this past spring from George Washington University and there's a mantra, it's very simple, goes like this, raise high in all endeavors, raise high. To Georgetown County Council, I'll say that to you tonight. Raise high Georgetown County Council. We'll be right behind your support.
Good afternoon. I'm Helen Baldwin with Corporate Real Estate with South State Bank. I'm here to comment on the second reading this evening, 11D, number 23.05, to amend the Plantation Federal PD, adding open storage to the list of approved uses. South State Bank, the owner of parcel A within the Plantation Federal PD, does not support a change in zoning for parcel B2 to allow for open storage facility or any other change in use. Since 1987, when the PD was approved, office has always been the intended use of the parcel and we, South State Bank, strongly believe that this use should remain as intended. South State Bank fully supports and welcomes building an office or retail on this site and feel that a vibrant office retail environment is beneficial to all of the community. And we strongly contend it is the continued best use for this parcel. A change in the zoning would have an adverse effect on the value of our property as well as other properties in the immediate area. As we know, once change is made, it's virtually possible to reverse and the impact can certainly be felt for generations. This is obviously not the first time Midgard has requested this change. In previous meetings, both County Council and Planning Commission meetings, adjoining property owners have attended meetings and I'm not sure if any are here this evening, but they've all voiced their objection to the proposed change in use. Members of the community, again, as well as several civic organizations, have voiced opposition to this change. We would like, again, to ask that council carefully consider the intended use to remain as an office parcel for parcel B2.
Dan Stacy?
Good evening, members of council. Mr. Chairman, I know first reading is not generally discussed, but I do have a prove if there's a question that comes up in first reading, I doubt. I'm also here on behalf of item 11D with regard to the application for Midgard. Holly will go through this as her normal thorough way, but this is a fully vested PUD that's been in existence since 87 and it has been slated for 20,000 square feet of office, which would likely as not compromise or be comprised of two-story buildings with a fully asphalted parking lot with lighting and no real restrictions other than what's in your existing codes. It's been available for retail and office use for 36 years and PUDs do change over time. The proposal before you today is for a 32-space, open storage facility with increased buffers and light control over what the current PD provides. There would be no access point from this proposal, this proposed use, except through the existing facilities that Midgard has, except for a crash gate in the back as required by Midway Fire. South State Bank is clearly opposed. The owner of the other parcel is not opposed to this and certainly not encouraged or being an advocate for it, but takes a position of neutrality. There is a landlocked piece of property that is affected in this area. We certainly could make arrangements to try to assist that family to have some access to that property through our existing facilities. As of right now, they don't have any, so their property is in fact rendered useless. Planning Commission actually approved this change. They made a recommendation to approve that we would do this. This is a different application than the first one that you saw. The first one you saw was for additional storage buildings. This is for open storage only with, as Holly will indicate as well, a much larger buffer than what is currently required and with some ability to control the lighting to affect those around. We respectfully request that the council give a fair consideration to this. We think that the use proposed is perhaps among the least impactful uses that can exist for any use of property. There will be almost immeasurable, I mean, hard to measure, small amounts of traffic that will come from this. There will not be an increase in traffic. It will not operate 24/7. It will be lit for security reasons, but we can manage that through the concessions we've made to Holly in the PD application. I will be glad to answer questions when you come to this in your agenda item if you have those. I'll be glad to try to supplement that information. Thank you.
That's our final speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all for your comments. We move down to appointments to boards and commissions. We will first go with the Building Code of Appeals, Counselor Newton.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint Eric Holmes to fill the seat on Building Code Board of Appeals.
We have a motion from Counselor Newton for the appointment of Eric Holmes to the Building Code of Appeals. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Newton. We move down to the Economic Development Alliance Board. Counselor Elliott?
Yes, sir. I'd like to appoint Joe King to the Economic Development Alliance Board.
We have a motion from Counselor Elliott for the appointment of Joe King to the Economic Development Alliance Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercado. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go down to Georgetown County Planning Commission. Counselor Elliott?
Sir, I'd like to recommend the appointment of Mr. Darius D. Roper IV for Planning Commission.
We have a motion from Counselor Elliott for the appointment of Darius Roper to Georgetown County Planning Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercado. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I've just got a comment I'd like to make. I'd just like to recognize Ms. Sandra Bundy for her years of service on the Planning Commission. She replaced Mr. Alicia Lett when he passed away back in John Thomas's tenure here, and she just finished up the remainder of her recent tenure. And I just want to say that she, for me personally, she was a plethora of information. She, when I was stumbling a lot, she was one of the two people I would go to with questions about the subject at hand. I just wanted to recognize her. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go down to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 23-02, and I want us to amend the fiscal year 23 operating budget of Georgetown County, Ms. Langston, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Council. Ordinance number 23-02 amends the fiscal year 23 budget ordinance for the individual items listed in that ordinance. You have that attached to the document. Some of these items have been previously approved by County Council. And with that, if you have any specific questions on any of those items, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, we request approval of second reading of ordinance number 23-02.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Langston?
Any of these items, are they change orders or these were revisiting the budget and looking at the actual costs?
They're not change orders so much as like things that came up that we didn't budget for, unanticipated expenses that have come up in the first half of this fiscal year.
Ms. Langston, was any of these due to the, that were leftover projects pre or during COVID that now has come to light that the price tag has gone up to where we had to request these changes?
No. I don't think there's anything that like were additions to specific projects. These are all more things that, unanticipated expenses, expenses that came up during the year, like, we didn't realize, the Motorola data extract thing, we didn't realize that we were going to have to pay that to get our information from Motorola. So we didn't budget for it. We have to pay it. We need to appropriate the funds to be able to do that. So all of them are pretty much like that. We have some donations that, for some things that we had to buy, we got donations for them, so we're appropriating those donations so that we can buy the award ceremony equipment and some gear that people gave us money for, so that we can purchase them. But we can't just go out and purchase it. We got to appropriate the funds for it.
Ms. Garris, would it be fair to say that some of these things are just tasks that we didn't complete in the prior year that are just carried over? Is that true?
Those were all done on the previous amendment. We did, we do that in amendment, I think it was like in September and October, we did that amendment that were the carryovers. So these are like new projects that came up during this fiscal year that we didn't anticipate during the budget process.
Right, well, that clarifies it. I just thought there might have been some more carryovers in there.
No, we pretty much got all of those so far anyway. Hopefully, we won't have to come back to any of those.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Any additional questions for her? Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-02?
A move, Mr. Chairman.
It's a move for approval of the ordinance by Counselor, I didn't get it, Newton. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Counselor Anderson. As you know, this was read into the record at first reading, so we want to have an amendment to incorporate the text to ordinance number 23-02. Is there a motion to amend?
Make a motion we amend.
The motion by Counselor Newton to amend ordinance number 23-02 to incorporate the text. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Counselor Anderson. We'll take the amended motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go back to the original motion with the amendment. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. Langston. We move on down to ordinance number 23-03. To amend the future land use map to redesignate 1.9 acres of a parcel, TMS number 03-0408-009-00, located on Choppie Road from high-density residential to commercial. Ms. Richardson, Finance Director.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I will, as usual, go over items 11B and 11C together. These both involve a request from Ms. Queen Rogers to rezone approximately 1.9 acres from GR or general residential to general commercial or GC. This property is located on Choppie Road or Highway 261 at its intersection with Deep Creek Drive. The site is mostly vacant wooded and open space land. It does have an old structure that faces Choppie Road that used to be a store. The applicant has asked to rezone the property from GR to GC to allow for the commercial use that was historically located on the property. This parcel was unzoned up until 2008, when we initiated countywide zoning at that time. And I'm not real sure of the exact reason, but at that time, the zoning that was placed on that property was general residential or high density. We have very few high-density residential zoning, certainly not in this section of the county. But for whatever reason at that time, that intersection was chosen for a small area of GR zoning. We don't feel that this request would be considered spot zoning because this property is located on a corner lot and historically, this location has had a commercial store. We do also have other crossroad locations throughout the rural areas of the county where we try to concentrate some commercial uses to allow for community stores, produce stands, and those type of things. The future land use map does show this property as high-density residential, which of course conforms to the current GR zoning. If the rezoning is approved, then we would request an amendment to the future land use map to commercial. We feel that the proposed rezoning is a reasonable request based on the historical use of the property and its corner location at a crossroads. In January, the Planning Commission heard this request at a public meeting. There was one person who spoke in opposition to the request and we did receive one letter, which is in your packet of opposition. And the board at that time made a motion to recommend approval for the rezoning for Ms. Rogers and they also voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval for an amendment to the future land use map to commercial. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson?
I have a question. Do we have any idea what kind of a commercial thing is going to go on this piece of property? I'm just curious.
No, so it wouldn't be required for a straight rezoning as this one. In my conversations with Ms. Rogers, she indicated the continued commercial use for that building. It, I think, has historically been used as a store for the neighborhood for many, many, several generations, was her indication.
And what is the structure now, did you say? And what is the structure now, did you say?
Um, it's, it's vacant right now.
Oh, it's vacant. You did say that. Okay, so what was it, like an old store or something?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding.
It would be possible that it'd be going back to being a general store or whatever.
That's right. But of course, if the rezoning is passed, as I always remind you all, you know, general commercial.
Right, absolutely. I understand. I was just curious.
The, the, if I might add, the, the lady that requested this rezoning, her family had run the previous store, and the reason it got zoned to residential versus cut out as GC, General Commercial, was that when it, the store had closed and we come along in 2008 with our zoning, and it was just, the whole area was just blanket zoned residential, not paying any attention to the store that had closed. And, and a family member has come back and wanting to reopen and establish a business on that area. So that's how we got to where we are today.
Yeah, frankly, I'm not sure we were even aware that store was located there at the time.
Yeah, that's correct.
When we zoned that section.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Richardson? Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-03?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 20, 23-03.
A motion from Councilor Newton for approval of ordinance number 23-03. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move on down to ordinance number 23-04. I think Ms. Richardson already spoke about that. Any questions to Ms. Richardson pertaining to ordinance number 23-04? Is to rezone one parcel on Choppie Road totaling approximately 1.9 acres, TMS number 03-0408-009-00-00, from General Residential to General Commercial. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-04?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 23-04.
We have a motion for approval from Councilor Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
I mean, I'm sorry, Councilor Newton, I'm sorry. There's a second from Councilor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Ms. Richardson, ordinance number 23-05, to amend the Plantation Federal Plan Development located on the west side of Highway 17 in Paulus Island, tax map number 04-0155-001-01-12, to add, dash 12, to add open storage to the list of uses for parcel B2 located along the rail of the PD adjacent to Library Lane. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir. We still refer to this as the Plantation Federal Plan Development, for whatever reason, even though it is, as Ms. Baldwin said, South State Bank today. This PD is located on the west side of Highway 17 in Paulies, and this request specifically involves parcel B2, which is located along the rear of the PD and adjacent to Library Lane. This PD was first approved in December of 1987. It's a commercial plan development, and open storage is not currently listed in the uses for the PD. The applicant made a similar but different request for this tract back in October of 21 for enclosed storage. The Planning Commission recommended denial, and that request was withdrawn before it made its way to County Council. The same request for enclosed storage was submitted in December 21, 2021 with some minor changes. Planning Commission vote to approve it failed, and Council failed to approve the request at its second reading in February of 2022. The new request is now for open storage only, not enclosed storage, to be allowed as a permitted use. This PD now basically includes commercial uses that are office and retail oriented, but parcel B2 has never been developed. It contains approximately 1.83 acres and is located on the site with the, the law office there and, again, as we've mentioned, South State Bank, which fronts Highway 17. This proposal is for 32 paved outdoor spaces for RV and boat storage, and the proposed percentage of impervious area is 65%. Ingress, egress for this parcel, as Mr. Stacy mentioned, will be through Tilller Drive and through the owner's existing development there that's adjacent to this one. They will not use Library Lane for access, and they will also not use the drive past the bank from Highway 17 for access. Their only open access will be through the existing Midgard Storage Development. The site plan was forwarded to the Midway Fire Department for their comment regarding that emergency access, and they requested that the current access to the site have an unobstructed width of no less than 20 feet, and they also asked for an emergency entrance with a 20-foot gate. Initially, that was going to be at the farther southern end of Library Lane to accommodate one of the requests of the property owners in the PD that has now been moved to the northeast corner of the tract. A tree plan will need to be submitted and approved prior to any construction or land disturbance on the site, and based on our current ordinance, they will need to maintain 19 trees or 183 inches DBH based on the tree ordinance. The property that's adjacent to this site to the north is on Resort Services and is also owned by Midgard Storage and contains a storage facility. The tract to the west is on General, General Residential, excuse me, and is vacant. The tract to the south is also Zon GR and is the location of the post office. While buffers are not required based on the existing surrounding uses, the applicant has proposed as part of the plan development to keep a landscape buffer and retain the existing trees along the front property line to provide a separation from the existing commercial uses in this development. They have also, I'm proposing, to maintain a natural buffer around the entire perimeter of the site to keep a visual screen from the adjacent residentially zoned property. There is an existing detention pond located along the southwestern boundary of this parcel, and the applicant is proposing fencing that in with a four-foot, four-foot black vinyl chain link fence. They also plan to extend their current security fencing around the new storage facility that will not exceed six feet in height. This tract does fall within 500 feet of Highway 17. It is technically within the Walk On My Neck Commercial Corridor Overlay Zone. They are not currently proposing any structures. If they do propose structures of any kind, they will need to comply with the overlay, and the fencing will need to comply as well, which that's where we require the black vinyl chain link and screening with landscaping as well. Future land use map shows this area as commercial. A change to the future land use map is not needed for this request. In terms of traffic, the currently approved plan calls for 20,000 square feet of office space. We expect that depending on the type of office, that could generate anywhere from 220 to 700 trips per day. We don't have ADT estimates for open storage, but the same amount of mini storage that is proposed here would equal about 62 trips per day. So the, the traffic impact is significantly decreased based on this proposal. If Council moves forward with approval for the request, staff recommends that you add conditions that the boat storage area not exceed 32 spaces, submit an approval of the tree plan, construct, any construction plans need to comply with the overlay zone, and final approvals from Midway and from the Stormwater Department. Planning Commission held a hearing on this request on January 19th. Six people attended the meeting and spoke against the request. The issues discussed were buffers and landscaping, lighting, traffic, and the excessive amount of current storage in the area. Planning Commission did recommend approval for the change with a four to two vote. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from Council or Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a few. The, could you explain, Ms. Richardson, the 65% impervious comment that you made?
In a, in a general commercial district, so not in a planned development, but if you were developing a general commercial piece of land, we have a requirement that your impervious surface, that could include the building, the pavement, a situation where water will not flow through, cannot exceed 70% of the site. And what they are proposing here exceeds that because they're going to fill the site with 65% of impervious cover.
So they're well beyond, well below the requirement?
Yes, sir. They exceed it by 5%.
So the storm, we don't foresee the stormwater being a problem for this facility?
Well, they will have to meet all the stormwater requirements. That is a zoning requirement. The 70/30 is something that's in the zoning ordinance and actually was there before county stormwater requirements. But they will have to submit for land disturbance and meet the stormwater requirements for flow, water flow off the property.
Another question concerning the trips per day. And, and I'm, I'm looking at the map. If, if we, if we allow the storage facility to go forward, the, the means of enter and egress is through parcel B1?
Um, no, sir. It'll be through the existing Midgard self-storage development that's located on, and accessed off Tilller Drive.
Off Tilller Drive?
So this will basically be another portion of their development of their facilities.
It's attached to their current business.
Right. And, and of course, their current business is enclosed storage. This will be open storage, but it will be owned by Midgard and, and managed by them and will only be accessed through that existing development except for the emergency access requirement.
Is the, the view from 17, business 17 there, can it, can you see parcel B2 from
Um, I don't know that I could say that for sure without seeing some sort of rendering. Again, they are not proposing any structures, so any view you would see would be the actual RVs themselves. And again, they will have a, a fence, a security fence around them, and they are going to retain the existing natural buffer that's there.
It sounds like they're going a little beyond what we're even requesting to satisfy everyone around there with the, with the buffers and trees and to do whatever. Are they going beyond what we're requiring?
Well, this is a planned development, so certainly it stands on its own and has its own requirements, and whatever is passed by this body then becomes what the zoning is for this tract. I will say that what they are proposing here does exceed what would be required in your basic commercial district.
So they are going beyond?
Yes, they are putting buffers up when there aren't adjacent residential districts. I mean, normally, we're not going to require a buffer unless there is a residential use there. They're proposing buffers in that case. They do have, it's my understanding, they do have an easement on Library Lane, and they have an easement to Highway 17, but they have agreed not to utilize those to assuage the traffic concerns for the existing property owners there.
Okay, with, with the, if we leave it as is and office buildings are put there?
Yes, sir.
Um, now, all the, you say that our projections are from 200 to 700 trips a day?
Yes, sir. It depends on if it's medical, medical offices generally generate more traffic.
The, I mean, that, what's the estimate of how many people would be working in there for that many trips?
I think that trip count averages in the amount of employees, so I'm not sure what number it uses, but that would, that number from, that we get from the ITU would include the employees' trips in and out as well as the visitors.
And I take it the, the rules with the pervious and impervious services, if, if office buildings were put there, would reach the max of what is allowed?
Well, they would have to have associated parking, of course.
So we're looking at a lot of asphalt and concrete?
Potentially, yes, sir.
And the boat storage, what, what type of, what type of grant, what are they going to have, a rock?
I think the proposal is to pave.
To pave?
That's where the 65%.
Okay. So, um, I was understanding that was going, is rock considered?
So they want to pave the, the parking areas and the travel ways. The rest of it, they could leave.
Leave impervious.
And they're probably going to need to do that for their stormwater plan, I would imagine.
The, with, with the way this lot is laid out, would the, how would the office park trips exit onto 17?
I think the, the current plan for the office uses would be through the existing development onto 17. Or Library Lane, they could use either one.
Is there a traffic light at that intersection?
No, sir. I don't think so.
So we're talking 200 to 700 trips through an intersection that doesn't have a traffic light? What does the requirement on numbers count in order for DOT to put up a traffic light at an intersection?
Um, I do not know that. I would, usually that comes when they submit their plans for encroachment to DOT, and then they review it and...
So we possibly could look at having a traffic light furthermore slowing down traffic on the neck that everybody is so constantly complaining about? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that I'm not sure that that would require a traffic light or not. That would be our call.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Ms. Richardson?
I've got one. The existing detention pond, the Serenow Holly, is that, will that handle the runoff from the impervious in your estimation?
I, I cannot answer that. Mr. Elliott, that will, I'm sure, will be part of their submission when they submit to county stormwater, and they'll have to show that pond and what capacity it has and what capacity is already being used elsewhere. And if it cannot, then they will have to provide additional retention area on the site, or they may need to reduce that impervious amount further.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions for Ms. Richardson? It, it's my understanding, did you say the Planning Commission approved the plan?
They recommended for approval, yes, sir.
They recommended it? Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-05?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion on ordinance number 23-05 for approval.
Yeah, a motion from Councilor Newton. Is there a second? There's a motion for approval from Councilor Newton on ordinance number 23-05. I'm asking again, is there a second to Mr. Newton's motion? Hearing that motion dies for lack of a second. We move on down to first reading of ordinances. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I'm sorry. Ordinance number, the first reading of ordinances would be read into the record only. Ordinance number 23-06, to amend the Inlet Point South Plan Development located along Inlet Point Drive and Norris Drive in Litchfield, TMS number 04-0149-003-00-00. To add two 10,000 square foot single-family lots on the site of the former water and sewer treatment facility. Ordinance number 23-07, to amend the future land use map to redesignate approximately 6.9 acres, TMS number 04-0414-003-03-00, 04-0414-003-04-00, 04-0414-003-02-00, and 04-0414-004-01-01. Located along Black Gum Road in Paulus Island from high density residential to commercial. Ordinance number 23-08, to rezone four parcels totaling approximately 6.9 acres located on Black Gum Road, identified as TMS number 04-0149-003-00-00. on Black Gum Road, identified as TMS number 04-0414-003-03-00, 04-0414-003-04-00, 04-014-003-02-00 and 04-0414-004-01-00 from MR10 to, to general commercial, GC. Ordinance number 23-09, an ordinance to amend the transportation element of the Georgetown County Comprehensive Plan. Ordinance number 23-10, an ordinance revising and amending ordinance number 2018-26 pertaining to revenues derived from Sunday sales of alcoholic beverages within Georgetown County. We move to approval of our minutes from our meeting on January 24th. Is there a motion pertaining to our regular council meeting minutes of January 24, 2023, including your packet?
It's been moved.
It's been moved for approval of our regular council meeting minutes of January 24, 2023 by Counselor McCall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Is there any other person, any other business to come before council? Stand motion to adjourn?
It's been moved.
Moved by Counselor Elliott for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McCall. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Motion carries, we stand adjourned. Thank you.